Good evening. We're back with the next in our series of election forums produced by the Long Beach Community Action Partnership with Padnet.TV, your community media center and Long Beach's public access television station. I'm Matt Kaplan. Here it is. That's the City of Long Beach sample ballot booklet. Less than a month to go now till the polls open on Tuesday, April 8th. Tonight, we are proud to present both of the candidates who hope to replace Stephen Neal as council member for the 9th District. We are broadcasting live on Charter Channel 32 and Verizon Channel 41 in Long Beach and beyond. We're also streaming live at Padnet.TV, and that's where you can watch this entire series of forums as video on demand. Additional cable cast times are listed on our elections page at Padnet.TV. We once again have one hour for tonight's program, but with just two candidates, we can take at least a bit more time to explore their positions on the issues facing the 9th District and our city. As I've said before, the candidates and our distinguished panelists, I'm sure, would encourage you to learn more before the election. We'll meet the candidates and get their opening statements in a moment. First, though, I want to introduce tonight's great panelists. They are Rene Castro, Hub Manager for Building Healthy Communities here in Long Beach; Andrea Marisol Solsona, publisher of Palacio de Long Beach; and Rachel Luranga, Long Beach Press Telegram editorial writer and a member of the Los Angeles News Group editorial board. Each panelist will get to ask three questions. We're also being slightly more generous with the time provided for candidates to respond to those questions. They'll have 90 seconds, and it's my job to strictly enforce that limit. We'll begin by asking each candidate to make a 90-second opening statement, starting with Ben Darty.
Good evening. My name's Ben Darty, as you've heard, and I've lived in Long Beach now for about 28 years, in the 9th District since 2003. I love my city, and the Navy brought me here. And this wasn't my goal to be in Long Beach, but once I got the feel, that small-town feel, it was too much like home. I couldn't go anywhere. And preserving that and maintaining that sense of community is really what my platform's about. It's about being a representative for everyone, no matter who they are, where they're from, or what part of the city they're in. Even though it's the 9th, we need to be a city as a whole, and that's very important to me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Rex, it's your turn. We'll hear now from Rex Richardson.
Sure. Well, thanks, Matt, Rene, Andrea, Rachel, for spending this time with us. My name's Rex Richardson. I'm Chief of Staff to Councilman Neal. I'm proud of the work that we've done for the last four years. I purchased my home five years ago in the 9th District. And when I purchased it, I wasn't sure what district it was. I just knew you got great value. I liked the neighborhood, had its fair share of challenges, but I was willing to serve. When Stephen Neal came into office and asked me to come onboard as Chief of Staff, I saw it as a great opportunity to come onboard and really invest in my own community and make real change in the lives of my neighbors and my own residents. And that's what we've tried to do. We've tried to sort of address longstanding issues that have plagued our community for far too long, like nuisance liquor stores, like foreclosures, like crime, light, and violence. And we've worked on programs to really address those systemic issues. Some of the programs I'm proud of are the Be Safe Long Beach Summer Youth Recreation Program. That's when we kept the lights on at Houghton Park for a few hours, just to make sure the kids had a safe recreation environment to stay off the streets during the summertime. Another program I'm proud of is the foreclosure registry. That's when we took blighted, vacant, foreclosed properties and sort of held banks accountable for their maintenance. And lastly, I'm proud to have worked to find a solution to crack down on liquor stores. This is what I want to continue doing, addressing the issues that have faced North Long Beach for far too long, and that's what I'm going to continue to do as councilman. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rex. So, we will now go to the first of our panelists, and that'll be Rene Castro of Building Healthy Communities. And Rene?
Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome. Nice to see you both. So, my question is, what would you accomplish, or what would you like to accomplish, in your first 100 days in office if you were elected?
Ben, you'll answer.
And that'll be for me. Okay. And first, Rene, I appreciate that, because it's going to be a challenge, being brand-new to the office and new to staff. I do know that diving into the budget is going to be our number-one objective, but on top of that, we want to start a Map Your Neighborhood program and volunteer program. So, we want to really engage the public in becoming civically-minded and active. And that means knocking on doors, being out in the public, meeting the public, and talking to them, finding out what their needs and desires are, rather than trying to tell them what they need. Let's find out what they feel they need and work with them as a whole. We need to increase the business, so immediately, we're going to run a Buxton Report, find out where people in the county, in the city, and the district are spending their money so we can attract those businesses. We can go, you know, knock on their door and say, hey, look, our consumers are right here, and they're traveling here to get their product. We need to bring them back into the city and into the district.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Rex Richardson, it's your opportunity.
Sure. Thanks. So, within the first 100 days, we've got some immediate things that need to be addressed in North Long Beach. The New North Branch Library breaks ground in April, right? That's a project that's going to be, needs to be monitored to ensure that it doesn't have work stoppages like the old Fire Station 12. We received funding in the last budget to address the biggest infrastructure issue in our district, Houghton Park Community Center. So, we've received $3 million in the last budget. We're going to go through a community-building process to get input from the residents on what amenities they want to see in that community center. And then, we've, over the last four years, sort of gone out and expanded citizen engagement from four neighborhood associations to four or five to about eight or nine, right? So, in those eight or nine neighborhood associations, we want to, we have sort of a mechanism to go to them and create a policy agenda for the next four years. And then, when it comes to businesses, you know, my opponent brings up something good, a Buxton Report. Actually, we did a Buxton Report in North Long Beach, and it's just about two, three years old. It's pretty fresh. So, the first thing we do is work with our newly-established Business Improvement District, which went into service in January. I'm proud of the work that I've done to bring those property owners together to try to fill the void of redevelopment and try to create a path forward for our small businesses, considering data like a Buxton Report, but really input from our property owners. So, there's a lot of things that we have to really address in the first 100 days, so I really doubt that we'll have, we'll have too much time on our hands.
All right. Thank you both, gentlemen. We'll go now to Andrea Marisol Solsona, publisher of Palacio de Long Beach, for the first of her three questions. Answering first this time, though, will be Rex Richardson. Andrea?
Thank you both. Like many poor areas, the 9th District is impacted by a lack of safe spaces for children to recreate. What ideas do you have to promote increased joint-use agreements with the Long Beach Unified School District?
Sure. So, I wouldn't call North Long Beach a poor neighborhood. It's rich. It's with residents. Our incomes aren't all that low. We've got some targeted areas that really could use some work, particularly around housing and programming. I mentioned earlier, we created a program called the Be Safe Long Beach Summer Youth Recreation Program. And that was a targeted program to make, ensure that Houghton Park was a safe space. But we've got, in North Long Beach, we've got about seven parks, four of them in the 9th District, right? And so, when you go to those parks, you want to look at our facilities. Are they up to par? Do kids want to recreate there, right? Or are they better off playing in the streets? That's why I'm proud of these last four years to have made significant material improvements to those facilities. We got the Los Angeles Clippers to work with Kaiser Permanente to install a brand-new basketball court, fitness stations, basketball courts, and a dog park at Coolidge Park. That's so that the facilities are new and modern, and folks have a place to recreate. Additionally, you know, we've got to, you know, we just created a joint-use program with Jordan High, with Long Beach Unified School District, and that creates some unique opportunities for us, particularly in areas where don't have parks, like north of the 91 Freeway. So, north of 91 Freeway, we have Hamilton Middle School. It's got an abundance of space. We can explore those joint-use opportunities to expand land use and parks there. And finally, we're investing in the Houghton Park Community Center, while at the same time, Jordan High School is invested in its modernization, $100 million-plus operation to improve its facilities. There are great opportunities there to see how we can have sort of a force multiplier effect and sort of improve that whole facility.
And Rex, I'll have to stop you there. Thank you very much. Ben Darty, your response.
Andrea, this is exciting for me. It's been a dream to have a community center that can help children learn skills that can help them after high school and maybe even during, to become better and more a part of the community, to be able to support themselves through college, if that's what they choose to do, or if they choose to go directly into a field. Now, when we talk about the Houghton Park rebuilding and the $3 million there, that was budgeted for $10 million. We're not going to get far unless we get some partners. And we can, we have the Jordan High School, and we have the school district, and then we need some public partners, maybe a hardware store or something, to help build something where we can have a community center that truly serves as a useful product for our children. And not just there. My counterpart did mention on, there's a lot of land in the schools that's not being used, and a part of that is safety and upkeep. And we have to address that and get those parks that are closed during the evenings opened up, and we have to find a way to fund that, which means more business.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Ben, thank you both. The last of our panelists is Rachel Luranga of the Press Telegram and the Los Angeles News Group. And Ben Darty, you'll be the first to answer Rachel's question. Rachel?
Evening, gentlemen. I wanted to ask, how do you address or how do you approach problems with crime? And if police are the answer, more police, how do you pay for that?
Well, absolutely. As we discussed just a moment ago, I said, we have to bring in more business. We have to increase tax revenue, and I really do not want to raise taxes for the public, which means that we have to bring in more business. And we have, the only way we're going to make more business, our empty buildings attractive to the public, to the business owner, is to give them some type of incentive. Let's show them that they'll come in, you know. I don't want to give any specifics, because I don't know the budgeting right now, but say we give them two years without paying a licensing fee. And then, if they hire locally, we'll give them another year. You know, let's make it attractive to be in Long Beach, just as attractive, if not more attractive, than it is to be in Lakewood or Signal Hill. Let's get those businesses in Long Beach, where we have the revenue, where we can expand our public services, and starting with public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Rex Richardson.
Thanks. So, to pick up where Ben left off, crime, to understand the circumstances of crime in North Long Beach, you need to actually look at the data. And the fact of the matter is, you know, crime is, it's an accelerator of economic decline, so you can't say, let's bring in more businesses while you have a crime problem. It's a chicken or the egg sort of argument. You have to have a comprehensive approach to address both. So, when it comes to actual crime, let's look at what we're dealing with. You have, you know, occasionally, you have a shooting, and some of them are related to gang activity, and then you have sort of a property crimes that happen, you know, citywide, it's a citywide issue, and some of it is sign of times. So, some of it is, yeah, let's go ahead and restore our gang field services unit to make sure that we're investigating the gang-related shootings, to make sure there aren't retaliations and things like that. But on the other hand, some of it isn't gang-related, and a lot of it isn't gang-related, right? Some of it is a matter of, you know, idle hands. If we don't have programming for our kids after school, sometimes there's more tagging. Sometimes, if you don't have programs after school, there might be a fight after school. We've got a high school in our, in our district. There's no conversation about public safety unless we have Jordan High School at the table and some of our middle school kids at the table. That's just the facts. And then, when it comes to sort of, you talked about funding services, so if we were to, so we've been cut to sort of historic levels, right? And in the last 25 years, it's not historic throughout the establishment of our city, but recent history. And if we're going to keep the lid on it, then we've really got to look at new funding revenues or adjustments to formulas, perhaps oil funds.
Got to stop you there, Rex. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thanks.
It's the tyranny of the clock, I'm afraid. Hopefully, people will learn more on their own. Candidates, it's my turn now to throw one at you, and my question, once again, comes from our host, the Long Beach Community Action Partnership, or LB CAP, one of Long Beach's most active and accomplished agencies, working on behalf of the disadvantaged in our community. And Rex Richardson, I'd like you to provide the first response to this one. What is your vision for working with all sectors of the city, including those at the low-income level?
Sure. So, you've got to have partners, right? So, the city council is only as good as sort of the information, the outreach, and its partners that sort of help provide some of these services to that community. Homelessness is a major issue in North Long Beach, right? We've got, we've got encampments along the Edison Right-of-Way, the LA Flood Zone, along the freeway, Caltrans Right-of-Way. And a lot of times, these people's services are being offered, but it might not be comprehensive enough to really address what their issues are. So, we have to make sure that we have the partners at the table who understand that issue and can spend the time to really provide those services. You know, folks like the Long Beach Rescue Mission, right? Folks like Building Healthy Communities. I mean, these people, they have place-based targeted initiatives that really focus on these issues, and that helps to inform what we do as a city council. So, if you were to sum it up, the way I would address some of those issues is by working in a wide collaborative format and looking at comprehensive solutions with partners.
All right. Thank you, Rex. Ben Darty, it's your turn.
Well, to elaborate on what Rex is saying, I think it's partners is exactly where it is. Nonprofits is what we're looking, looking at. We don't have the budget that we used to have, and we may not for a while. So, it's in the hands of the people to discuss their needs with us. And I, you know, implore them to be against civically-minded, and we can reach the public through our, through the volunteers and nonprofit sector. We got to support them by giving them space to operate and making it easier for a nonprofit to exist. If we do that, then we can get information back from them so that we're understanding the needs of the community at all levels, which is exactly what your question was. How do we cross barriers? Well, we do that by getting people to talk. So many of these people are out there doing great work, but they're doing it individually. And if we can get them to partner and, you know, connect the dots so that people are working together instead of apart, I believe we can accomplish a lot more.
All right. Once again, thank you very much, gentlemen. It's time for the first of our two breaks this evening. We will return to hear more from the candidates for Long Beach's 9th District City Council seat. This is a Long Beach Community Action Partnership Election Forum, coming to you live on Padnet.TV.
At the Long Beach Community Action Partnership, we're very proud of the millions of dollars that we provide in utility assistance services. And we're also proud of the thousands of people that we assist, including youth, adults, and seniors. But what we're most proud of are the relationships that we build one-on-one with people just like you to build a stronger community. Join us in changing lives and making a difference.
It's very pet-friendly. Everybody has a dog in Long Beach. It's Dog City.
Well, there's everything to do here. You've got the Pike, you've got Queen Mary, you've got the beaches, you've got paddle boarding, surfing. You go a half a mile that way, you've got surfing, you've got downtown.
I just think it's the most incredible, most beautiful, most unique city, which has so much to offer. So, I love it here, and I'll never leave.
A terrific job.
They have offered me opportunities. They allow me to utilize the equipment that they have. I get to practice more so than I would with the supplies that I have, with the equipment that I have.
I'm learning how to work again with more people and how to actually work in the actual studio and working with the cameras and hands-on.
I remember they said, like, lamp as in leadership. You know, I learned a little bit about how to become a leader, as well as, like, you know, communicating with the people I work around with.
You know, after being here, you know, all the teaching, all the skills that I've been learning, you know, became easy. It's like learning the alphabet. And from like, you know, we start from the bottom, and then we go up. We start learning all these new skills. Things that we thought that it was, you know, really hard becomes easy.
My name's Aldina Frizzell with Soul Love Magazine, and you're watching Padnet.TV, your shows, your community, and your station.
Welcome back to the Long Beach Community Action Partnership and Padnet Candidate Forum for the 9th Council District in Long Beach. We are live on Charter Channel 32 and Verizon Channel 41 in Long Beach and streaming at Padnet.TV. This is the sixth of the forums that LB CAP and Padnet will present as we head toward the April 8th election. We will return at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, April 2nd, for the return of candidates who want to become mayor of Long Beach. Look for these forums as video-on-demand events at Padnet.TV, if that's not already where you are. They are also being replayed on Charter and Verizon several times before the election. The schedules for those replays is on the Padnet TV, excuse me, Padnet.TV election page. And I hope you also know that Padnet has much, much more to offer. Take a look at the other great programming produced for you by your neighbors. To start the second of our three rounds of questions, we turn once again to Rene Castro of Building Healthy Communities, and Ben Darty will be the first to answer. So, Rene?
Great. Thank you. Gentlemen, so, as you know, last year, we had historic highs with regard to police-involved shootings, and it was really tragic for both residences. And I believe the Press Telegram covered quite a bit of stories on that. So, my questions were, do you see this as a blip, as an aberration, or do you believe there's something larger going on? And what are your ideas to prevent these kind of lethal interactions between our police department and particularly youth of color?
Ben?
That is a very hard question, Rene, because, first of all, I'm not a policeman, and I can't even imagine to move into their realm of expertise. I mean, I would, I would ask that question of a subject matter expert. My youth programs, after-school programs, again, working with nonprofits and volunteering, engaging the public, getting them outdoors where that criminal element doesn't have the opportunity to keep its head up in the public, right? I really believe that's the answer, is to, for people to get out of their homes and onto the streets, and that will take that criminal element and make them uncomfortable and get them, you know, have them move somewhere else where they're not being watched so closely. For me, that's my approach, right? And then, of course, you know, supporting the police department and doing their job to whatever means they feel is most appropriate.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Rex Richardson.
Thanks for asking that question, Rene. It's a, it's a very serious question. So, particularly the thing about young folks, young folks being targeted and killed. And when I moved, when I bought my home in North Long Beach, I was a 25-year-old male of color, right? And that, I fit that description of these folks that are being targeted. So, some of it is sort of a cultural, a cultural thing that really, really needs some sensitivity when it's being addressed. So, that said, to give some, give some specific answers, you can't just talk about putting cops on the street. You've got to think about some sensitive issues to really address young folks and to create safe environments for them. An idea is intervention workers, right? These are people from the community. They don't increase pension costs, right? You get a nonprofit and give them a grant, someone like LB CAP to hire folks from the community to be out there after school, ensuring that, you know, maybe instead of tagging, I'm doing something more productive, I'm hanging out at the skate park. Maybe instead of, you know, maybe smoking a joint, I'm going to hang out and just talk to my friends instead. That's really the sensitivity, and I'm sorry, we're not going to take a trained police officer and have them on babysitter duty after school. That's not their job. So, that's, that's one issue. Secondly, we really do need to look at our staffing levels. I mean, sake of time, we really do need to address the staffing levels, particularly in the gang field services unit. So, thanks.
Thank you, Rex. All right. Andrea Marisol Solsona, publisher of Palacio de Long Beach. Andrea, we're ready for your second question, which will first go to Rex Richardson.
Okay. How do you plan to attract and engage the arts community in your district?
Rex?
So, this is a really cool question. So, we've got something going on right now called the Uptown Renaissance, right? And the idea of the Uptown Renaissance is taking a lot of the longer-awaited issues and problems and opportunities and projects that we've been waiting on for a long time and really celebrating them, giving the community something to sort of celebrate and get behind. And one of those things we can celebrate is uptown arts, right? So, I'm working to establish an uptown arts collaborative. And essentially, what that is, is if you look at Jordan High School, that used to be known, Jordan High School used to be known as one of the performing arts highlights of Long Beach, performing arts at Jordan High School. You look at that, plus some of the theater programs at some of the churches, like Light &amp; Life Church, you grab those, you put them in the room and say, okay, the Arts Council for Long Beach, Arts Council for Long Beach is a great tool. Can we give them specific input as to what sorts, what types of resources and support we need here? And also, where are the, where are the places we can highlight them, highlight the arts that we have here? I mean, we've got a jazz quartet at Jordan High School. We let them play at Houghton Park every chance they get at the, at the concerts in the park. When we do a video to show, to, when we do a video to highlight an issue at City Hall, we try to bring a poet in from North Long Beach. So, really, we've got great assets here. It's just a matter of providing a platform and the resources to highlight it. So, short answer, we're going to build an uptown arts collaborative.
All right. Thank you, Rex.
Sure.
And Ben Darty, it's your turn.
Well, it's hard to follow that, because that is exactly what we have to do. We have to use the arts collaborative, and we have to make use of the theaters. And whether that's through grants or seeking out performers, and I also believe that having an arts festival in our parks that celebrate the different cultures that we have in our district, I believe, is more of, let's not just go for specific things, specific theaters. Let's bring out those cultural differences, explore them so that we can learn to appreciate each other and appreciate what we have to offer. And I really believe that is the type of art that my interest lies in. I want to know how my neighbor appreciates and what they have to offer.
And thank you, Ben. All right. Here is Rachel Luranga of the Press Telegram and the Los Angeles News Group with another question for you. And Ben Darty, you'll be the first to answer this time. Rachel?
Ben, as you know, redevelopment agencies are no longer a reality in California. For cities like Long Beach, that's really hurts us, there's not as many dollars to be used. How do you propose that we make up for that loss of economic development dollars? And do you have any specific ideas about how to generate dollars?
Well, I think I spoke about this once before, Rachel, in this evening, and it's about attracting businesses and finding out what the people want, because businesses aren't going to come unless they think they're going to be successful. So, we need to aid them in their success. And, and that is by giving them customers, knowing what our, what the clientele is in this city, in the 9th in specific. For me, is what do the people, the residents of that area need? What do they want? Where are they spending their money? Let's get it here, because money isn't just going to magically appear. There has to be tax revenue. And the only way we're going to have tax revenue is by creating employment and creating more businesses that increase that level of revenue. It's the only way we're going to do it. There may be some other creative ways, and I'm not opposed to, let's get creative. Let's discuss with the private sector, what can we do to develop and increase our corridors? But first, I want to take care of our communities and our people. That's number one for me. Sidewalks, streets, alleyways, signage, let's take care of that, and let's work with partnerships for the business corridors.
Thank you, Ben. Rex Richardson.
Sure. So, as I knock on doors and talk with voters and ask them about their hopes and dreams and what sorts of things they want to see in the community, a lot of it is tied directly to what redevelopment could have done. And the whole focus of redevelopment was blight removal, but it really was a real tool that we could use to create a deal-making sort of ability in the area and bring much-needed amenities to the community. Now that it's gone, we wasted no time in looking for something to fill that void. And, and it doesn't necessarily mean we throw money at the issue. I mean, we've got some models in Long Beach that are already working, the Business Improvement Districts. If you look at the way they've turned around Bixby Knowles from If you look at the way they've turned around Bixby Knowles from 15 years ago to now, the driving force wasn't particularly redevelopment, it was the Business Improvement District. If you look at downtown, redevelopment played a part, but really, the property owners and the businesses in that district owned it. In North Long Beach, we finally ran an election and asked the few property owners in the area to sit in the room and see if there's something they're interested in, you know? And nothing comes without its own controversy, but a majority of property owners said, yes, we'll take a step in that direction. And the city said, absolutely, we'll pay our fair share as well. So the businesses and property owners on January 1st created their first Business Improvement District. So they can sort of play that deal-making role that's missing, that's gone from redevelopment. That's one thing they can do. So if there's a vacant lot, if there's a business that needs a vacancy, they can say, here's a Buxton Report, these are the businesses that will actually be successful and are desired in the community, and can go out and outreach those businesses and say, here, Long Beach is a place you can get great value, you can locate here, and here's the facts about crime, here's the real facts about the opportunity and incentives that can be offered. That's really what one solution, that's one step.
Got to stop you there.
Sure.
We won't get to that second one in this round, I'm afraid. Gentlemen, it's my turn once again. We all know that the budget limits what any government, what the city government is able to accomplish in our community. And you've sort of addressed this, so let me hear from you once again about how you would reach out to local nonprofits that you might, or the city might collaborate with to provide the services that the city can't do on its own. And Rex Richardson, you'll be the first to respond.
Sure. So a couple things. So again, the Be Safe Long Beach Summer Youth Recreation Program, that was a program that's run, it's Long Beach CAP that facilitates that program at Houghton Park. This is the first program of its kind in our city, and really, the driving force was North Long Beach, and it was expanded to five different parks citywide. Now, it was modeled after the Summer Night Lights program in Los Angeles, and it also existed in the central area here in Long Beach. But this program was a very different program, and we couldn't have happened without the partnership of a number of partners from Long Beach CAP, Centro, Child, Building Healthy Communities, the California Endowment. So that's an example of how we can provide a service, because otherwise, the city couldn't keep its lights on at that park without staffing and things like that. So that's one example. And number two, you talk about services, the Business Improvement District, again, provides dollars that property owners pick up to provide services above and beyond the level the city doesn't provide. For example, if a tree gets trimmed once every five years, and the businesses say, this tree, it's in our interest for this tree to be trimmed because it makes our area look nice and manicured and attracts business, then we'll spend our own assessment dollars to spend the $100 to get this tree trimmed. That's above and beyond this level of service the city can provide. You know, if you go through certain areas of town, you see the guys on the segways and all that, those aren't city employees, those are property owners paying their fair share to get the services that they want from themselves. So the city can only do so much. So you've really got to be creative. Nonprofits, endowments, property owners, if you ask them, they'll say, yeah, I'm interested. I do want more.
Thank you, Rex.
Sure.
Ben Darty?
Well, a nonprofit is a passion of mine, and I've been involved with them for several years. And Long Beach Nonprofit Association could use an annex in the north. I've talked to people over and over again, and they're not aware of the grants that are available. And there is a full library to tell them the resources, and it's just, it's a matter of assistance. And when we talk about grants that can come from the office, let's take those nonprofits that are struggling, and let's give them schooling on, you know, how to be a grant writer, where the resources are, and how to grow as a nonprofit. And when we talk about how does that supplement the resources? Well, just recently, I heard faith-based groups say, hey, we can come up with the money and the bodies to paint. Well, you can be sure that I'm going to be calling on them saying, do you remember when you said, and let's do this, let's get it done, let's go out and trim and do some landscaping, let's get bodies out there. People love to volunteer, and it gives them a sense of ownership and pride in their neighborhood. And we just have to give them the platform to do just that and be a part of their community.
All right, thank you, Ben, and thank you, Rex. And just in case there are any nonprofits out there listening in tonight, that's the Long Beach Nonprofit Partnership, you can Google it, and they do have a lot of great programs to help groups like that. That will complete the second of our three rounds of questions. Now, there is a possibility that we'll extend this a little bit further since we're doing really well, but we'll let you know about that soon. Probably, in fact, definitely after we come back from another three-minute break before our possibly last round, and very definitely the closing statements from Ben Darty and Rex Richardson, the candidates for the ninth district council seat here in Long Beach. This is a Long Beach Community Action Partnership Election Forum, coming to you live on padnet.tv. See you in three.
Are you tired of paying $200 and even $300 to get your income tax return prepared each year? So am I. Hi, I'm Tricia Heath. I'm the site coordinator for the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, run by the Long Beach Community Action Partnership. VITA is a partnership between the Internal Revenue Service, community-based organizations like this one, and thousands of dedicated volunteers who ensure that your return is prepared accurately, confidentially, and with no charge. If you would like your return prepared by us, or you would like more information about how to volunteer, please call us at (562) 216-4610, or visit us on the web at lbcap.org. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lisa Mastromico, and I'm the director for PadNet, the Public Access Digital Network. PadNet is the community television station here in Long Beach, where we have all the media training and resources that you need to create content for our website and for our channel. If you're interested in field production, we can teach you everything from pre-production all the way through post. If you're interested in the studio, we just finished building a brand-new HD studio that's available to our members who are trained and certified to use it. Our studio series will teach you everything from running the cameras, the soundboard, creating graphics, even how to direct your own studio program. The first thing to get started is to become a member, and any Long Beach resident or organization or business based in Long Beach is eligible. Remember, PadNet is here for us to create programming by and for the people of Long Beach. Check us out today at padnet.tv to find out how to get started.
Hi, my name is Marissa Semensy, and I'm the Energy Advocacy and Family Services Director at Long Beach CAP. I oversee two departments. The Community Advocacy and Family Services Department provides funding to local nonprofits to enhance their programmatic services. We also have the ALLETE Program, which is the Eastern Los Angeles Energy Assistance Team, in which we provide basic weather irrigation and utility assistance. For more information, please visit lbcap.org. Thank you.
We're back for the last segment of this Long Beach Community Action Partnership Candidate Forum. With us are the two candidates for the ninth council district in Long Beach. You're watching us on PadNet, Charter Channel 32, Verizon Channel 41, and streaming or on-demand at padnet.tv. We're going to begin our third round of questions with Rene Castro of Building Healthy Communities, and Ben Darty will be answering first. Rene?
Gentlemen, so we all know that the makeup of the city council, the mayor's office is going to be dramatically changed in about six to seven months. So what are your strategies for working collaboratively with other offices? And do you have any ideas right now for working with other offices in terms of joint motions, agenda items?
Well, absolutely. I think one of the things that I am best at, Rene, is relationships. And that's sitting in a room with somebody and getting to know their thoughts and their vision, and being able to share my vision with them as well, and come to a common ground. And that's what has to happen with such a dramatic change in the city council. We're going to have to find ways to work together to accomplish goals that, how can I help you here if you help me here, you know? Or let's do this together, or a piece of what both of us want may look, you know, it's just cooperation. And I know that could be accomplished just by sitting in the room and talking. I enjoy that. I don't know how else to explain it than relationships. It's all about creating and building relationships everywhere, not just in the council, but with the community, neighboring cities. I'm not much of a borders and boundaries kind of guy. I like to cross those and get things done.
Thank you, Ben. Rex Richardson, your chance to respond to Rene.
Sure. So I've learned as chief of staff over the last four years that unless you have an organized district, it's very difficult to really move your position at City Hall. Now, we've got five, we're going to have five new council people next year, and I'll be the only one that's actually served as chief of staff to sit in the council chair. So that means I've been at, I mean, you name how many Tuesdays I've sent at City, spent there, building relationships with the staff, building relationships with the city council people. But I've learned a lesson. You know, one of our first council meetings, when Steve Neal took office, we witnessed as the paramedic rescue 12 was being cut, it was proposed to be cut, and we saw that a municipal, Long Beach Municipal Ban was on the same ballot, same budget to be cut, and we witnessed as 200, 300 residents mobilized on the city council, and they advocated to save the paramedic, and we didn't see not a single resident from North Long Beach attend that particular council meeting to advocate against it. Now, there were some blogs out there, there were a few emails that flown out, but no, not the kind of response we saw for the municipal ban. And that showed us, unless you have a seated table, you're most likely on the menu. You can have as many friends as you want at City Hall, but unless you have a powerful, engaged community that can actually activate and mobilize, then you're going to be at a disadvantage. And that's going to be my top priority, ensuring that North Long Beach residents have their interests heard at City Hall, and we can sort of have, we can advance our agenda at City Hall. So that'll be my top priority.
Thank you, Rex.
Sure.
Andrea Marasol Solsona is publisher of Palacio de Long Beach. Andrea, we're ready for your third question, which will first go to Rex Richardson.
Okay, gentlemen, you did correct me when I talked about the ninth district, and I stand corrected, because I want to now talk about the real facts. I read an article recently about how people are concerned about crime, but that crime is actually the lowest it's been in 40 years. So there is unfortunately a perception, and I would love for you both to tell me how your experience prepares you to begin to engage local community members in an authentic manner and to really change that perception that does exist.
Sure. So, great question. My entire adult life, I've been a professional community organizer, right? When I was in college, I was student body president because I got involved in the whole tuition increase battles, when Schwarzenegger was governor, and tuition went from just north of $900 bucks up to just south of $2,000 bucks a semester. You know, I was there, I was there, sort of, when Phil Angelidis ran for governor, I was a community organizer right here in Long Beach for the Phil Angelidis campaign. I went on to be a worksite organizer in South LA, organizing in churches and work sites around social justice and worker issues in South LA. And then the last four years hasn't changed. My role as chief of staff has really been to lead a community organizing drive. And essentially, we've gone, and I'm very proud of this, I mean, I can name them, we've gone from five neighborhood associations, now you've got, now you've got Houghton that's active, you've got Hamilton that's active, you've got Ramona that's active, you've got Cherry Manor that's coming together, you've got McKinley that's coming together, you've got Longwood that's finally active. And it took knocking on doors and talking to people. And you're not going to make everybody happy, but eventually, they're going to see the results. When we go to city council now, we don't have zero residents showing up. We've got 20 and 30 residents standing up when we put a stand to liquor stores. We've got 20, 30 residents that actually collect petitions to their neighbors about a new community center. This isn't my agenda, this is the agenda of the people because we ask them. So too long have we spent too much time going to, I'm wrapping this up, too much time, spending 90% of our time talking to 10% of the people.
That's it, I'm afraid, Rex. I'm really sorry. Got to do my job. Thank you, Rex. Ben Darty, it's your turn.
I don't want to make this sound like a rebuttal, but, you know, politicians do what politicians do, right? They rally people for whatever that special interest may be, and they can get them together because that's what people are interested in. However, when you get people together and teach them how to lead and how to be a part of something and how to feel good about what they're doing, when you're truly benefiting the community, as I have in several of the nonprofits that I'm organized with, the community safety and caring for veterans and sick people, and there are a few others, but we're not going to mention them here, that's, those different personalities that show up at the door, to be able to talk to them, see the smile on their face, mentor, that's different. It's a different approach, and it is exactly what I do. That is my life's work, is working with people. And yes, it does take knocking on doors and getting people out into the street. We got to get them out of the house, and we have to find common interests that can bridge gaps. That's really what it is, whether it be talking about our pets, or community safety, or the landscaping of the street, whatever it is, we have to get them out and get them engaged, and it may be in small pockets at first.
You've got it in there, maybe 91 seconds. Okay, thank you once again, gentlemen. The last of our panelists is Rachel Orang of the Press Telegram and the Los Angeles News Group. And Rachel, your question will once again be answered first by Ben Darty.
Right, Ben, let's start with you. I want to know, is there an affordable housing crisis in Long Beach? And if so, what policies and strategies do you have to address that crisis?
Affordable housing, and here's the thing, is I want affordable ownership. And if that takes purchasing properties and helping with grants for redevelopment of small properties that people can do it, tax incentives to change apartment buildings into something that can be bought, into a condominium, apartment-style condominium living, I think that's going to be the number-one goal. Let's get out of the rental community and into the ownership community. And right now is a prime time in the US with interest rates so low. We just have to promote it and help our developers move towards ownership, not renters.
Thank you, Ben. Rex Richardson?
Thanks. I can answer your question, I'm going to go back and respond to the politician's statement. We need an organizer in the ninth district. Here's why. When nobody showed at the Fire Station 12, I didn't see Ben Darty, I didn't see the last council office. I didn't see anybody there. When we put out a call for residents to stand up for liquor stores or advocate to adjust the slight price of oil to restore certain portion of the gang unit, I didn't see a response from those people. They weren't there. So when we talk about politicians, standing on the sidelines when people are advocating for your community is a political decision, it's not a decision for the community. In terms of housing, I was the first person in my home, in my immediate family, to own a home. I grew up as a renter. We were in a household that rented, right? So affordable rent is a priority. But the fact of the matter is, in certain areas, like I think the rent in North Long Beach is pretty affordable, but is the housing substandard? So that's the question. I mean, I don't necessarily mean that we need to go policy-wise and go advocate for rent control in Long Beach. Wouldn't be my priority. But we do need to necessarily go out and look at what we can do to improve some of the housing that is already affordable in the area. I've seen some, I've actually seen some great projects that we helped push through, like the Ramona Senior Housing Project. It was a project that offers 61 units, affordable senior citizens. It was dead when we came in. We had to go to the table, find a million and a half dollars to push that project through. Now our seniors actually do have affordable housing in North Long Beach. So we've really got to take a boutique-style approach to find how we keep housing affordable citywide.
Thank you, Rex. Now, I am going to let, Ben, you can have 15 seconds to respond because you were mentioned as part of, the first part of Rex's response, so 15 seconds.
You know, I really don't need it. I think the rebuttal in itself is all I need.
Okay, very good.
My best advocate.
All right, then we will continue. And that means it's my turn once again, gentlemen, at the end of this third round of questions. We all know the port is not in the ninth district, but there probably is no other single entity outside of the city government itself that has more influence over the success or failure of the greater Long Beach community, particularly now with Boeing backing off even further. And we all know also that this has been kind of a controversial topic down at City Hall lately, the management of the port and the possible, the accusations at least, of interference in the management of the port. So if we, if we could, and Rex, I'm going to start with you, ask you what you think you're, what you see as your role in making sure that the port remains competitive and successful?
Sure. So the first thing we've got to do... So the first thing we've got to do is hire an executive director for the port. We've got to go through a comprehensive force, search, find someone who's committed to stay in the long haul, understanding our city, understanding the differences with our port from other ports around the country, and really be a champion for that port. Then, we've got, we've got one, and very soon we'll have another new harbor commissioner. I think it's important that we do have a good relationship with our harbor commission, and we empower them to go ahead and, and sort of advocate for our city. And then, we do need to give the port autonomy. I mean, that's, if we want our port to really, our commissioners and our executive director really invest, then they need to have autonomy to do what it is, the things that they need to do. Now, the first step that I would do is, is sort of express, I would work with the council people to express some, some things that I think would be, I would value in an executive director, you know, some hopes and dreams, and I would leave it to that group to find someone they can work with. Because if we put somebody in, you know, if we go sort of, you know, personality engineering on the harbor commission and in the executive director's seat, then ultimately, we're not, they're not going to have the synergy they need to really be successful. So the top priority is going to be to bring in an executive director.
All right. Thank you Rex.
Sure.
Ben Darty?
I have to agree with Rex on this, an executive director is necessary. But in addition to that, I think that there needs to be a public oversight committee. A committee of volunteers from around the city that can keep people, keep that executive director and the port commissioner in check. Let's really watch what they're doing and how they're doing it, and make sure that they're hearing the concerns of the population. I, for me, that's the most important. What impact is the port having on the city and on the state, and throughout the, you know, the country actually, because we are such an active port. So if we're not getting that input back, you know, those trucks that come in and out of the port and the railways run right through our community. And so that impact, plus, it employs so many of our residents. So why not have some civilian input? I don't see a problem with that. And mostly just so they can be heard.
All right, thank you, Ben. Gentlemen, we will end this forum by giving each of you another 90 seconds for your closing statements. And Ben Darty, that's going to begin with you.
90 seconds is probably too much. What I'd like to say to the public is, I'm running for this office because I am a citizen who is running for office because I care. I have a deep-set interest in the quality of living for you and myself for now and in the future, and for the children's future. We have to do more than build a resume. I'm here just for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben Darty. And Rex Richardson?
Again, thank you so much for the opportunity. I think this is our second, you know, we don't get as much attention in our debates as everyone else. This is our second one, technically our third, but you know, so, you know, I'm proud of the work we've done the last four years again. I mean, you know, I can, I can just rattle off what I'm proud of. I mean, we went from zero email, you know, weekly newsletter to the only city council-driven weekly newsletter in the city, 5,000 subscribers. You know, we've got more neighborhood associations involved. We've got real tangible policy that we've taken leadership on in our city. You know, we've got projects that were dead, now they're moving along, right? These are the things that I'm proud of. And so when it, in terms of what you'd like to, what I'd see, I'd like to, what I do, I'd like to see North Long Beach move forward. I'd like to see us not always be considered a stepchild in the city. I'd like to engage more people in the political process. So here's, here's what I'd like to say to the voters. If you think involving more people in the political process is a good direction, then I'm your candidate. If you think making a priority, addressing longstanding issues that have plagued our community for far too long, then I'm your candidate. If you think that we should finally turn a corner in North Long Beach and really have something to champion and get behind, like the Uptown Renaissance, then I'm your candidate. Vote for me on April 8th. My wife and I live in the Coolidge Triangle neighborhood, we're not going anywhere, we're not career politicians, we're just having fun in our community. So, so thank you so much, and vote for Rex on April 8th.
Thank you both, gentlemen, very much for joining us here. And panelists, we're also very grateful to you for joining us this evening. We also want to once again thank our D&amp;M Design and Marketing for their generous underwriting that helped make this series possible. And you're missing possibly a handshake over here, which is good to see. I'm sure nobody could question the dedication that both of you gentlemen have for this city and the district that you hope to serve. I also want to thank Babette's Bakery, which has again provided a great meal for our production crew, most of whom are volunteers, so that is their compensation, along with knowing that they are serving their community as well. You or your organization can also underwrite this work and be thanked on the air. Visit our elections page at padnet.tv to learn more about that. One more reminder that this forum will be available as video on demand and will be replayed on Charter Channel 32 and Verizon Files Channel 41 throughout the election season. The online videos and the broadcast schedule are at padnet.tv. I hope you'll join us again when we welcome back the candidates for mayor of Long Beach on Wednesday, April 2nd at 7:00 PM. That's just six days before Long Beach goes to the polls. Thanks for watching and for helping to shape the future of our great city.